I was waiting for. All right. Well, let's begin. We'll call the special town council and council committees meeting to order for Monday, November sixth. Roll call shows that counselors Laraway, Marx, Demerit, Powers, Kenny and myself, Councilor Wingard are here. Councilor Berthistle is not able to join us tonight. We have two sections to the meeting. The first is a special town council meeting. So we'll call that to order. And the first order of business there is a workshop in our process for selecting a new permanent town manager. And in previous meetings, we asked counselors Marx and Kenny to sort of lead this endeavor for us. So maybe we can start there and discuss from that one.
Did you want me to say anything about, I already sent the document that's gone out to the public about information from agencies I contacted? And I tried to list advantages and disadvantages as people expressed them to me. I asked each firm about what they thought was the advantage to hiring them opposed to other options. I do realize I missed one on that that, or two, the first section about disadvantages to doing it ourselves should have also had the same disadvantages that were on others about. If we do it ourselves, that doesn't leverage the networks that they would have, or Eaton Peabody would have, or SGR would have. And obviously, there's no headhunting and cold calling and all that. I don't really have anything to add beyond what I presented in that document, except for that addition. And personally, I feel like if we would like to hire a firm, that might be great because it sounds like less work for me. And it sounds like maybe better from staff perspective from what we've been hearing. So that seems good to me personally, but that's just me personally. So I can open the floor to anyone else.
Yeah, maybe if people have opinions, maybe we just go around and see what people's opinions on the options, which range from a completely in-house search to a search at accessing a variety of levels of professional support. And we identified really three or four levels of professional support. So people want to share what their thoughts are, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Star.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I was um kind of, I was supportive, I think, when we were talking. Not, I was supportive of doing DIY when we were talking and, you know, in the interim, we've been looking, looking for an interim. Uh, and I think that process alone has been a little bit eye-opening. Because there is a dearth of people out there. And there's also, um, you know, hearing, we've heard from, from senior staff, we heard from somebody in the audience, a, a community member. That was kind of warning us, I think, away from that. And so taking all that really into consideration at this point, I I can see the advantage to having a, having a firm lead this thing for us. And so that, and then, I don't know, we'll talk about, I guess, the, the options on the table after, but I, I'd say I've done a, a 180 from, from the last discussion based on, on all inputs. Um, and I, I do think we could use, we, we really should have some, someone that's a pro at the table, because none of us really are. It's, and it's not rocket science, but I am also, just, just from talking to some of the candidates and stuff, I think there are some potential gotchas that we are not going to know about. I mean, some have been identified, some we have no idea. So I, I think it's, would be very wise to have someone leading the process, um, leading the process for us.
Yeah, I think, um, on the one hand, I think we've been very successful on the school level in doing a DIY and finding people to run our school systems. And so it's absolutely doable. I think it's absolutely, I, I think as a council, we'd be capable of it if we had the time to do it. But on the other hand, if, um, we think it's better to invest our money elsewhere, that's also fine. The one thing that I find the advantage, there is one advantage, I think, to doing it ourselves and, and so long as we don't outsource everything to, to a company, I would love to, I, I want to make sure that there's, you know, people in the community who are involved in, in picking out the next town manager. And I want to make sure that we have great input and, and people who are on that committee who are, um, in the staff, who are part of the staff, who are helping us figure that out. But I also know the time is limited because you guys are running just on a treadmill that does not stop. It just goes faster and faster for you guys. And so with that limitation, on the other hand, it's always great to have great expertise. And if we get the right company, I, I'm totally fine with that. I, I, I would be up for that. The one thing I would like to see is a broad, me personally, I'd like to see a broad search and not pick all the great candidates from Maine, but also be able to look outside of Maine. And so I'd be, um, comfortable with a, with a company that has a very broad search. If we go company-wise, I think that that has a huge advantage because they have networks throughout the nation that we, we just don't have. So we could, um, if we do go with a company to help us within this search, I would like to have them have, make sure that they're a company that has a broad swath and are looking have connections outside just Maine. Personally, that would be, um, what I would like to see because I think there are probably outstanding candidates who would absolutely love Orono and find this community outstanding all over the United States. We have a lot to offer. That's my thought, which is kind of a yes and no. I'll go either way.
Strong leadership.
Yeah.
But great consensus building. So, so we're down clock last year. So first of all, I want to thank Leo and Sarah for their work that they did. Oh, I know there's a lot of people doing work on this. And Jeff, of course, you're doing a tremendous amount of work. But particularly the document you put together, I thought was very helpful. Um, I wanted to thank the staff leadership team for their letter. I thought it was very helpful. Um, and it responded directly to the things that we were talking about in terms of our statement on leadership transition that we'll need to post. So, you know, more members of the public can see that and, and what we're prioritizing. For me, the, um, the best way to get a council to understand what, what it takes to do something is, is to make them do it, I suppose. So it's kind of that, you know, that Leo's 180 is not, um, I think there's a tremendous amount of work that goes along with this process and legal, I don't want to, I want a legal expert, someone who really understands the, the process and what the pitfalls are. So that we don't step into it in terms, you know, we're, we're going to have discussions about whether it makes sense to have a, like a meet the candidates portion at the end. And, you know, we're getting some information that maybe that's not something you could do. And, you know, I don't, I don't want us to try and decide it together. I want an expert who will be able to tell us, answer those questions for us. I do think we need to have a conversation about how we're going to procure this. And, um, there's an emergency clause in our procurement policy that reads to me like it's an opportunity for us to, if we're going to, if we're going to hire a consultant to do this, it is, we're, we're procuring a service. So I, I think we need to think through what's the right step to make sure we can do that. And we do have emergency procurement provisions within the code that we may need to use because I'm concerned about just cold calling vendors. And we have to agree that this emergency is a council because otherwise we're, we could be subject to questions about our process that we want to avoid. I also think that I, I really, Sonia sent us an email earlier today and understand that she can't be with us. And I really appreciate, appreciate her taking the time. The thing in her email that really stuck with me and I really associate with is, um, we don't want to hire a consultant who's going to outsource our leadership. And for me, this is Orono's search for a new town manager, a new leader. And the council needs to facilitate the involvement of staff, the involvement of citizens. And we have to make it clear what our priorities are through this process with ourselves, with our community and with our consultant in terms of what, what our expectations are. I know others have thought about this a great deal and kind of steps in the process that are going to be important to them. And I, I really want to see that be a part of what we, what we come on.
Are you ready? I, yeah, I think I agree with everything basically you just said, Dan.
So I shoot for.
No, I, I obviously haven't been present, um, for the previous discussion on this item. But getting up to speed, I really appreciated staff's letter. Um, I think it is important that we take that very seriously. As we transition, we want to make sure that we're doing this with sort of all parties concerns heard and represented. And I think it also just is good common sense to make sure that even though we might be technically capable of doing this process, we also all have busy lives and we're doing this work best we can, but it's, it's good to put somebody who's an expert in this process. But as you just raised, and Sonia raised with us, I think it's very important, um, that we are actively involved in the process every step. I think you, you said not outsourcing our leadership to that point. You know, I, I, I think this can be a really great community building opportunity. Finding new leadership. Sort of bringing all interested parties together where we all can feel good about this. So I look forward to figuring out how we can most deftly and not like cumbersomely, as an adverb, uh, involve community input. Uh, I really am very interested to hear what people in the community want to see in a new town manager especially. Um, so whoever we go with, hopefully, you know, I want flexibility to make sure that we're getting that kind of input.
I, I think I'll add one thing, just, I agree completely with what everyone said. Those would be my priorities too, about as much community involvement and as much staff involvement as possible throughout the process. For me, it's really less important which model we go with and which firm and more about. I did double check with every firm, some of the things council had already asked about. So like survey that went out to all the staff and all the community, all the firms said, yes, that's fine. You can do that. And the same thing about the size of the search committee, they all said, yeah, we like it when it's smaller, but actually we've all done them bigger. And if it's important to the town of Orono that more voices and more people are included, that's fine. Up to, I don't know, previous people who ran searches for us said in the nineties, our search was well over fifteen. I don't know. They said it's closer to twenty at that point. And I did ask about the meet and greets for finalists, and the answer I got back was they're commonly done. And so they're a hundred percent fine, but we can certainly, the other thing I got from the MMA was whether we hire MMA or not to do our search, we have a lot of free services available to us through the MMA. And one of those is consultations on all these kinds of legal questions about searches. So we can reach out to the MMA in addition to the, um, other consultants who all said that they do them. So that's what I got. So.
I would just say it.
Okay, I was gonna say, and I think that's great, having MMA for all kinds of questions. I think where I, my concern is like not knowing enough to ask the question. That's where I feel like I am. So, but that's, it's nice. I think they're, they, no matter what, will be a good resource.
And I guess, Jeff, I just want to say, everyone I spoke to was lovely and wonderful at all of these companies. And I want everyone in the community to know that, that they were all great. And I think it's going to be a really hard choice. You know, who we're going with when we get to that point.
I, I would, I, I fall down on the side of, of working with a company that's more knowledgeable rather than trying to do it on our own. And really, probably my preference is to look for a firm that has significant expertise in this kind of search, because I think, uh, one, we haven't done one for over a decade. It's, it's essentially unprecedented for the town to do it. And two, the searches for executives that the town has done have either been within systems, like within the town or within the school system, or searching for a school superintendent, which has been done more recently than a town manager. But I think school superintendent is really different. I think schools are sort of in management terms, really loosely coupled organizations. That is, schools operate in sort of silos. And those silos often operate semi-autonomously. So a teacher can go in and close her door, teach the class he wants. A principal can operate a school with a degree of autonomy. And that is not how historically Orono has functioned as municipality. Instead of working in silos, the strength of, of Orono has been our departments working together. And that means that a town manager has to be somebody that does more than just manage the pieces. Town manager has to be somebody who can understand the synchronicity or synchrony of that system. And so that, um, searching for that candidate, to me, is a tougher job. And we know Orono is a tough place to, to work in many ways. And, you know, it's a town where the public wants a lot of say. We want to respect that. We want to bring in a lot of voices. So, um, for me, finding a, a great partner company to work with, help us in the search is super important. So that's where, that's kind of where I fall. But I do, I appreciate Dan's point about making sure that we do our, that we do the job right, right? That we follow our processes and our protocols. And if that means that we have to formally move to this an emergency situation so that we can speed up our procurement process, I think we should do that sooner rather than later. And if we have to send out RFPs or however that process works, I want to get that going immediately. So I don't want my desire to seek expertise to sort of slow down the process, but I think it's really important for me to have experts help us through the process. And so so I would say, so where do we, where do we fall out? Like, um, it seems like there's some consensus that having assistance wouldn't be a bad thing. So then that, so, so what's the level of assistance that we feel that we need?
So we're looking at options two, three and four.
Yeah.
Correct?
For me, it's, it's more only because I've seen some of the, when we're working in an environment where we want to do a big search, a big broad search, like Matt was saying, we want to look beyond the borders of the state of Maine. We want to get the best, most qualified manager in here as possible. We have to educate that pool of applicants about Orono. If we were only looking at town managers who have experience in Maine, they're probably familiar with this weird little corner of Maine called Orono. But if we're looking nationally, we have to teach people about our community before we can get them to apply. And so for me, a bigger corporation, a bigger company might have more resources to help us do that.
I think I'm leaning toward option four also, Jeff.
Where are you looking at? Was it from your email?
Yes, yes. Which is linked on the agenda for the public also. There's a link to that in the agenda.
Link.
Yeah, on, on the agenda, it's the first thing, the, the hyperlink, email from counselor Marx to town council. I think four makes a lot of sense. I mean, yeah, it's expensive, it's bigger firm, but it gives us flexibility to to approach this in the way that will give us the best shot at getting somebody that everybody can really feel good about.
Did you find?
Well, yeah, I, I, I I see that and I'm going to surprise everyone who suggested. Worth, worth even mentioning, but I'm, I'm, I'm more in favor of, of the local search to be, not the local search, but using the local firm. Um, I mean, eating people used, they, they shared over fifty, fifty main communities where they've done this. I assume A, they have the best main connections. B, they did national searches with more than, with more than one of the, probably all, maybe all those communities. I don't know. So I don't, I don't think having that, I don't think them precludes us from doing a national search by, by any stretch. And, and I, I am certainly open to outside resources, but I do think Maine does have kind of a unique personality. And each community has a unique personality. A company in Texas, you know, to them, Orono is a spot on the map. And I, and I think to Eaton Peabody, Orono's Orono, just like, just like all of us. If we said Wells Maine or Portland Maine or whatever it is, you have a, that has a distinct personality that we all sort of understand. And I don't think you get that from, from the firm, a national firm, nor from a national candidate. And I'm a little, you know, at the end of the day, we are a town, we're not a city. So I don't think we're looking for a big city manager that, because I think, I think it's a very different environment, you know, where Yankee ingenuity, we're thrifty, we, you know, we, you know, Sophie's wearing five hats here. Um, I think, I think with a, with a city, they've got an HR department, probably three people in it. They've got a finance department with probably twelve people in it. You know, they've, they're not, I, I think it's a different, and again, it doesn't preclude them from, from applying, but I, I also, uh, I'm, I guess I maybe resent a little bit the idea that, oh, someone from away is going to be better for some, for no reason, just because they're from away, you know, that, I, I think a lot of, you know, people will probably will look at Maine and think like, oh, that, that's Maine, you know, they're, they're backwards kind of thing. And I, I don't think that's a good and someone who could looking to come here, maybe wouldn't be looking that, at it that way. But somebody might also be looking like, hey, I'm going to go there and phase myself out. And this is, sounds really, really quaint. Let's go to Maine and write, and, and doesn't know, really know the environment and stuff. So I personally, I'm, I'm more in favor of, of the Eaton Peabody. And also, I guess, you know, money's not, we'll say it's not an object. But when, and they are three times as expensive, but they, they have zero, they have two, I think, through community, two communities in Maine that they've done this for. They've done it all over the country. Their connections are all over the country, but their connections are not in Maine. That said, probably not, you know, it's Maine's a small town, right? So when the ads out there, they're all going to, everyone's going to see it. But
I wouldn't say that the, the, the advantage is that we get somebody from away. It's, it's just like increasing the pool, I guess, increasing our options. But, but I, I hear what you're saying. And I also, I mean, I, I've never done this before. I, I don't know, um, how typical it is to get somebody from that far away from this, of this sort of situation. I mean, this kind of job does require sort of in, at least the development at some point, if we get somebody from away, they'll still have to develop this awareness. But it, it certainly would be an advantage to have somebody who already understands the legal situation of the relationship between, um, the state of Maine and its government and governmental operations, our legal system and the way the municipality operates and interacts with that. Um, not having to sort of start fresh with a new state municipality relationship. I mean, I do see the value in, if we can find a, a candidate that we've think meets our needs, who's from Maine, that does, you know, quicken their ability to sort of hit the ground running. But, you know, I don't want to exclude somebody just because they're out of state.
Absolutely not.
I think there's, I'm sure there are great options out there. And, um, I mean, if you can beat a body for way less cost, still can have some of those connections, you know, tentacle out a little bit outside of Maine to see what's out there. I, I guess I, I see where you're coming from. I mean, it is a hefty price tag to, for just increasing the pool, um, that much.
I guess, um, I'm, I'm from, I grew up in Texas. By the way, and, uh, and I live in Utah. I know, I lived in Utah. And then I, I've lived in Minnesota and I absolutely love it. It is the most spectacular place I've ever been. I hope to die here. So it's a great, it's, this is a, an amazing community. And the one thing I don't want to do is, um, is, uh, be biased against outside people who are going to be incredibly like fall in love with this place, have outside ideas come in and be like, this is incredible, you know, and, and be all for it. On the other hand, I totally get what you're saying. I don't want us to be biased. Absolutely. We should probably be a little bit more on, uh, like, these are local people, they understand the situation. But I don't, you know, and, and we want to embrace people from Maine because they understand this place. But I also don't want us to be biased against out outside people. And I want to make sure that the net is wide because I can just, coming from the West, Maine has just incredible, like, has a, a lot of the same like mentality, a lot of the same people, a lot of like, that I met in, in, in the West. And, and I think that they would be interesting people. So I just don't, what I'm saying is I don't want us to, to be blind and have our Andy blinkered at that. On the other hand, I get what you're saying. And Maine is a great place. And there's going to be people here, I'm sure, who are just fabulous to be here. But I, but, you know, let's not ignore, ignore those people from Texas.
Funny, I picked those. And, and to be clear, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a homer, uh, here. And, and I think, but, but there's, to your, to your point, not biased for, not biased against. That's, and, and casting the wide net, I think it's done not just because this company is in Texas and they do national searches. So I don't, I don't.
There are small communities everywhere.
Yeah. And we don't, I don't, I, I don't think we should be looking at like this SGR as the national and, and Eaton Peabody is the local. I don't think that's the case.
Yeah, Leo, I think, I just want to say, I think you're right that like all the companies are going to list through ICMA, they're going to be national level advertising. They're just maybe a different slight balance on whose connections are in which place. I think you're absolutely right, that everything's going to be a national search. Nobody's not going to list our job on a national board. If we want it listed there, we just pay and it's up on ICMA and it's on those national sites. So I think that's true. Uh, so I, I do think that it's important, like there, I mean, there are extra services for that amount of money too. And, you know, we, they may or may not be services that we're interested in having, but there's more PR, there's more advertising services, um, that are included in that price. And some of those could potentially be a la carte'd. And I even did ask when I talked to MMA about that, like if we want to a la carte some of these other advertising services, they're like, that's fine, add them on. We just need to have a clear division of who's doing what. So, I mean, those are possibilities. Um, so I think they're all good options. Um, I don't have a complaint with any of them. I'm still a little bit for myself leaning toward four. I kind of like the idea of, uh, a broader net. I keep thinking Orono is very specifically Maine, but Orono is also very specifically college town. And that exists, you know, all around the country. And I, I want to be sure we're maximizing that too in our search. And I'm done. Something else come.
I was going to make that college town point. So now I don't have to. Um, but thank you for, I associate with it because there are fifty flagship universities in the country and, and we're one of them. And those communities have, you know, a unique, something unique to them that, you know, Warrington or, you know, Rumford or Bethel, all other towns in Maine aren't going to have. I would say, I, I like the, I don't know how we can go back, if we go back and do like an apples to apples comparison, you know, and then we talk about the procurement process. That's why the procurement process, yeah, we're working fast to get this, get this started. But, you know, we have a statement on leadership transition and I, I don't know if there's a chance to, now these are posted online, which disadvantages anybody, you know, so if we go back to Eaton Peabody and say, you know, we'd like you to think about this scope and scale, they're actually going to have access to, um, what we got from, um, the SB, SBGs of the SGR, SGR. So that, that's a bit of a, I don't know, curve. But, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to go back and say, you know, we're doing this on an emergency bay, we're going to source this on an emergency basis. We'd like an apples to apples from a couple of different vendors to the extent, and I don't want to create more work for anybody either. And I, I look at you and I think it sounds like more work to me. So.
They, they all know what each other charge anyway. You know, staff can probably tell you out there, um, but they know. I mean, because I, I asked, I said, you know, I know there's different levels. We can hire firms that are within Maine. We can hire firms out and they all can tell you exactly what their competitors charge. So, um, I think they know that part. Um, but,
I, I'm a little bit confused on what the, what the procure, why, why that's an issue, I guess. I mean, and to your point, I think we already have proposals, so we wouldn't.
So my, my understanding, this could be wrong, is that our normal RFP, RFQ process is, we list it for fifteen days. You know, we put out the call for proposals and then we would review them after fifteen days. However, we can do procurement through a series of qualified quotes or bids or separate from a bidding process. So we have good quotes, so we don't technically need to put it out for an RFP, RFQ. That, I could be wrong and I'm going to rely on Sophie to correct me when I'm wrong. There is the emergency stipulation that Dan mentioned that, or has been used for like true emergencies, like the truck went off the cliff and we have to buy a new truck or something. Not that that's ever happened, but, um, like something dramatic happens like that. So we may not have to invoke an emergency stipulation because it's not an emergency of that type where we have, we can either choose to do the full fifteen day RFP, RFQ, or we could perhaps look at a series of basically qualified quotes that we have. We may be able to change that.
I think some agents just walked into the room.
I would say that as we've talked about, as we've looked at chapter two purchasing, there's what the ordinance says and how we've been doing it. I think council can make a decision to sole source this, even though it's in that $25,000 ish range, you're also going to pay them probably in pieces for this work. The other piece is you have quotes. And the way that you would have been able to keep them out of the public realm to be able to do apples to apples would be to have gone through an RFQ process. Um, as soon as we have them, they are public for everybody to see. So, um, if, if I have no dog in this fight, this is not mine, but, um, if you were I have no dog in this fight, this is not mine, but um if you were asking for a recommendation, given our practice to date. I would say you have identified the firms that you are aware of are doing municipal searches right now. You might make one more call out to Baker Tilly because they're a big one that is operating in Maine right now. And get their proposal and which, given the other numbers we've seen, I would expect it to be very close to SGRs. And then pick the one you want, and then let somebody complain about it, which I really don't think is gonna happen.
So we put it on an agenda, like our, like our, we put it on our November agenda and vote on it as an order or a.
Yep, so you would authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement. Whoever that town manager is at the time, when you're ready, cause you guys would negotiate a deal, a contract. And um it would go from there, um. Just like any other order for uh service.
Very helpful, thank you.
I have an appointment scheduled with Baker Tilly for the follow up call, the earliest they could get that scheduled is Wednesday, so. I still have a call with the equivalent of who I spoke into at all of the other consulting firms, and I imagine, since all the others did after that phone call. They all said, we'll send you a proposal, so. Do you want me to continue with that scheduled call for Wednesday with them and add that to proposal to the list?
Personally, I would like to know what the difference between SGR and Baker Tilly is. Um, I've seen some of the material that Baker Tilly has put out for other municipalities, I have not seen materials that SGR has put out, so I need to do a little research on that. But if um. We won't meet between Wednesday and Monday, and I don't want to put this off for another week, so I'm willing to forego. If if the consensus is, we don't want to wait, I'm willing to forego that.
Oh, we do have one scheduled for Thursday, Jeff, are we keeping that meeting?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a meeting.
We added one on Thursday. On the ninth.
So, so we could, so we could talk about, yeah, we could.
I don't know if I'll get a proposal that fast, my experience has been, after I speak to people, it takes a couple of days before the proposals have arrived. I imagine if I speak to someone on Wednesday, judging by the other companies, I'm likely to get it by Friday. And for sure, I would think by Monday, by what other companies have done.
Can I ask you how they gave you a cost without giving you a proposal?
Yeah, because um I spoke to, I'll look up his name. Um, he's like a business development person from them, not the head of executive searches. And he has access to the package that they offer, so this is the price for the package that they offer. But this didn't allow me to ask the kinds of questions that I asked the other executive search directors at the other companies, right, the details of. How does your timeline look and how do you feel about? No, meet and greets at the end, or, you know, all these other detailed questions that I'd been asked by council to ask. So, the price quote was given to me, this is a package deal, this is what their package is, in fact, I had a follow up email from him today. That clarified one part of that price, uh if you want to give me a second, I can pull it up. Um, I did confirm that travel costs for candidates are not included, but in that price, all advertising is included, so it's essentially equal. To the SGR quote, which theirs was twenty six, four hundred plus advertising up to twenty five hundred. And then the um Baker Tilly is, uh do you have that number right there, it's twenty nine, right? So they're essentially equal to each other cost wise. Is that helpful?
Yes.
So, can I, can I just? Obviously, it sounds like the census going towards SGR, but just for the, for you guys that are leaning that way, what is it specifically, now that I, and now that I can get to the link? Is it the fact that they're gonna do cold calling, and is it the fact that, or is it the fact that um? We're likely to get more out of state?
I mean, it seems like, I mean, there's just all of these different services are wrapped up in it, whereas with the other. You know, we have to sort of do all the work of choosing, deciding we want to do this and that. Um, to add things in, like the other part, so with with the lower options, this one. Think it is the most flexibility right from the get go, suppose, on all of those counts.
Yeah, I was gonna say, for me, the advantage of SGR and maybe Baker Tilly, I suspect Baker Tilly does this too. Is the idea of having moderated discussions with different segments of our community, with our employees, with. Staff leadership, with uh a separate discussion with council. I think that's really helpful, because I think. There is, I mean, we've lost a lot of experienced staff. For a variety of reasons over the past several months. We want to build new capacity, new resiliency within our staff, we have to listen to. What specifically staff members have to say, we similarly have. A hugely active, and I'm glad we have an active populist community. Community members from all different constituencies that come out to our meetings, I think we have to listen to them. And I also know that as a council, we have a lot of discussions about a lot of big ideas. That I'm not always great at capturing, and my hope is that if we bring in an outside agency like this. That doesn't have a dog in the fight, they they can help moderate all of these separate discussions, for me, that would be, that's worth the money, but.
It it, and we've talked about set aside resources to do, you know, an evaluation of the community, like a a conversation with the community. And we're all, you know, we're all in our first term on this, on this panel, um so that's, you know, that's something for us to consider too, and and. The the capacity we develop as part of this process to be. Better about engaging the community and under- better understanding the community, I think is really valuable. It was something we were gonna fund anyway with. Survey instruments and things like that, that I think is, I think the products, ideally the product and person that comes out of it, the process and the person that comes out of this. Are both part of what the value is from this experience.
So looking at the Eden Peabody, develop a format that allows citizens and employees to have input in personal characteristics, education, trades, experience, so it sounds like. I read that they're, they would do something similar to what you just described, Jim.
Eden Peabody definitely does have, um at the beginning, a meeting with staff members, with all of them, and also with the community. Definitely, and I believe MMA also, although I have to double check. Um, I don't know if it's as many meetings, I haven't compared that exact tally, maybe Jeff has looked at something and worded each other than I did, um yes. Jeff, that I think there might be more that come later, I don't know.
Yeah, I I I haven't done a comparison, Eden Peabody's gonna give us ninety minutes and this other company's gonna give us a hundred twenty minutes or. I haven't done any of that.
Me neither.
So, um my, my hope is that we, we are working, we begin to work with a firm. That is not just focused on, let's get somebody in the hot seat, but let's have a process that brings. A community back together that quite honestly has a lot of friction points right now, and. You know, I I think. Part of our long term communication plan, our hope, has been that we find ways to facilitate more conversations within the community. And that we have better communications between council and staff and council's community and things like that, so. I don't know, I'd rather uh, I'd rather front load that and intentionally spend a little money on that now, than find out that we're short on that later.
But again, I think that's what, I think he, he but he's offering that same thing, I don't know the difference either, I haven't compared the. Compared, again, I don't know if they've said this many meeting, I doubt they have, maybe they have in the.
Upfront meetings, I think, are the same to start, I'm not sure in the middle, I can take more detailed look at SGR versus E B Body if that's where we're heading and we're not deciding tonight, but I can't say that I've. Delineated those one by one for everyone, um so, from my perspective, I think everybody who applied is gonna do. A great job at interviewing staff and facilitating conversation with community, um I think it's a really hard choice, I think. One set of folks are gonna bring us more networks within Maine that they personally have. And the other's gonna bring us more networks outside of Maine that they personally have, and so I think, for me, the trade off is just the networks that they bring, right? And I guess I'm feeling like the main networks, people are gonna see our job anyway, if you're looking in Maine, you're gonna be looking at MMA and you're going to see. Those jobs, and within Maine, I think folks are gonna know our job exists anyway. And I think the networks are stronger in these national companies outside of Maine, not that every. All groups advertise everywhere, but the networks are stronger out of Maine, I think, in those companies, and stronger in Maine. In the main companies, so I think you're picking, for me, we're picking largely on networks and also on um. Um, I do think there's, and everybody said this when I asked, they all said, yes, there's these glossy brochures and extra advertising and stuff that, you know. Some of the the companies choose not to do and others choose to do. So, I don't know how much that advertising matters, but I think there is a difference in that level of advertising was expressed to me.
Do we think? Since it seems like the consensus is that we're committed to get, at a minimum, we're committed to getting some help, right, I think we're, we're clear on that. You think after Sarah has a chance to talk to Baker Tilly on Wednesday. Maybe we can do a little more, more digging into what Eden Peabody can provide, we can have a follow up to this conversation. On Thursday night, and if we're comfortable at that point, uh asking town manager to put an order on our next. Our next meeting.
That was my question, are we, do we need to vote at an official council meeting on this, so this needs to be voted on the thirteenth anyway? And um Eden Peabody spent, I mean, a very long time on the phone with me, I have a lot of detailed notes from that conversation, I can go through them all and type them all up. For council, cause I think they answer most of these questions, that's not already in the proposal, um I just didn't type up that level of detail. If you need me to call him again, I can, but he spent a lot of time with me, and I think. All of that's there, I'm happy to call him back and ask if there's something he wants to add, if you want me to do that.
I don't want you to have to do a bunch of extra typing, I mean, how's your handwriting?
It's not that good. I'm a person who takes notes in circles and arrows and diagrams, you don't want that.
Where they, was Eden Peabody um. They didn't have a postponed starting date, right, SGR.
Eden Peabody does not have a postponed starting date, SGR would start after the new year, uh although. The initial things that Dan was mentioning on um a survey going out to the staff in the community. And choosing who's gonna be in our search committee and putting out an email to invite folks to volunteer to serve on the search committee, all that stuff could be done before. Um, they don't know by us, like, they don't need to run that unless we want to pay them, I mean, it's an extra fee to pay them to run the survey. Um, it's a thousand dollars, but they said they were happy to have us gather that info first and work with us, you know, with that when they came on, if we wanted to begin that in December. Um, sorry, there was a second part to that question, what else did you ask?
Just if Eden Peabody could start immediately, but.
Eden Peabody can start immediately, absolutely, and SGR cannot start immediately on a full search, but SGR offers. Both full search and a la carte options, so the a la carte options could start as soon as we wanted, so developing the brochure and the publicity. And all that stuff could start sooner. Does that make sense? Because it's been their a la carte menu, they said a la carte services could start sooner, even if they're waiting for the search until January first.
But those are, that, like, the brochure was included in the.
It will be included in the price, but my understanding was, since they do it separately, also as an a la carte service, they have staff. That's available to begin that with us now, even though the recruiter who would run our search for us. Would not start until January, does that make sense?
Yeah, I would ask, so, I would ask for maybe just point of clarification that after the new year.
Yeah.
Cause June's after the new year too, so just, just to get.
Yeah, it sounded to me like.
Not the end of January.
It sounded to me like maybe a week after the new year, but I will double check that, okay, so what else do you want me to double check? Week start for SGR conversation with Baker Tilly on Wednesday.
And even if they can't provide you with. Uh, like, the same kind of quote, you know, within that twenty four hour window that we have, if you get a good sense. That they're comparable services, I think that would be good for us to know. Can we um, can we commit to uh making a determination on Thursday, which of the three? Of these firms that we've identified that we're comfortable going forward with?
If I may.
Yep, um with Eden Peabody, maybe you know this already, um do they do um? Cold calling or or whatever as well?
Neither Eden Peabody nor MMA do cold calling. Um, they were very clear that they work in the state of Maine and they have very strong relationships with all the towns. And said that they would not cold call because they wouldn't want to be stealing somebody from one town to another town, because then nobody would ever hire them in that other town. Um, so when I asked them what the difference was between, they said, you guys have a much better price. Tell me about that, like, is there something that has not been included, they said, well, we don't do the fancy glossy brochures, which we honestly don't think are important. Um, know that they think people would find us well without them, and they did say they didn't do the cold calling and head hunting. That other firms do, Sophie looks like she has something else to say.
Well, it's just that Thursday has come up a couple of times, and Thursday is a holiday for the town office. Because Friday the office is closed, so I just wanna clarify, cause I didn't have anything on the calendar, so.
So, okay, so.
I didn't either, yeah, it's nice.
We scheduled that.
At next meeting, yeah.
I thought we did.
Okay, I didn't have it on my, I didn't have it on my calendar, that's why I was a little, I mean, you know.
We scheduled the ninth and the fourteenth.
The ninth and the fourteenth, for possible interviews with people.
Oh, that was, yeah, interviews, interviews, yeah, uh, yeah, but we didn't confirm that, so.
That's why I was asking.
So, next week, however, Sophie, we're scheduled to meet on Monday and Thursday of next week, incorrect? Not, not this Thursday.
I I don't have anything on my calendar for the Thursday, the fourteenth, but we can put something there, I just.
There was conflicts with other counselors, that's why we didn't do it that day. I I know, cause I put it on my calendar, both of those times.
We were scheduled for the ninth, which was a Thursday, and the fourteenth, which was a Tuesday, for our meetings, yeah.
It was a Tuesday, not a Thursday.
I don't know if that was communicated to staff, it could be something that wasn't.
Yeah, it feels like though, the order that Sophie talked about before, we could.
Just put this on there.
Put it on the agenda for the, on, for the thirteenth, vote on it with the understanding that the chair will negotiate with. You know, talk about it at the council meeting and then, you know, authorize the chair to vote, you know, to negotiate with whichever one of the firms is the consensus choice.
Yeah, so my, my question is, when do we need to make that consensus choice?
At the meeting.
The meeting on the thirteenth.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
So the order becomes to select a firm, not the name of the firm.
That's it, okay, thank you.
The other thing that you should think about is allocating some funds to be able to pay for some of the things that you've. Already agreed to and will need to agree to moving forward.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, I have a list that says exact start date for SGR comparable services at Baker Tilly. And no further question for Eden Peabody, or is there a further question someone has for Eden Peabody?
I I have a question, I guess, for, for us, do we, do we think that the fancy brochure is? It's important, I mean, we're, he said they weren't, I mean, my hunch says it's not, but I'm just curious, like, if that.
It's important to me, um but.
Yeah, I have no opinion on the brochure.
No.
Um, Jeff, there is a sample one from SGR in the packet, you said you had seen, they sent a sample one, and um. I did reach out to that community and received a favorable recommendation back about their experience.
I'm open to be convinced that the brochure is important, like, I think if we're gonna hire someone, we need to walk into it with them. Being open to them convincing us of stuff.
Well, I mean, I think, I think it was SGR, it doesn't matter, they do it anyway.
Yeah.
I I I'm just trying, trying to determine if that's any kind of advantage.
Well, I'm looking forward to our continuing discussion on this, but I'm also very eager, um and not to, like arbitrarily give us four, but I'm very eager to hear what. Anybody here has to say on, our third item is public comment on this.
Well, I think that, I think it's probably good then that we have, we can hear public comment and then revisit it on the thirteenth, that's selfish for me. Um, I have, I have one other item to talk about regarding the, the. This search before we move on, so, but I don't want to cut anybody off if we have any other questions about these firms or anything like that. One of the things we committed to a couple of weeks ago is uh changing the way that we communicate or improving the way that we communicate about this process to the public. Suggestion was made that we put a button on the um homepage of the website, um and. I think we have two great documents that um Dan has put together for us. One is uh this Your Voice Matters document, and the other is our uh transition document. I would like to ask staff, um ask Sophie, when she has time to work with her staff. See if we can begin to get that button and that file, those files set up, just so um. Staff can easily dump all the material that we're generating in there and it doesn't become a burden two weeks down the road, so if you guys are comfortable with that. Starting with a simple button, and maybe this Your Voice Matters statement, um. Maybe we can.
And we have two things, we, so we agreed, we have a communication statement on leadership transition that we talked about at the last meeting. We worked on it in sessions, and then we, you know, people were free to give me back comments, and I incorporated a lot of the comments. Um, I I incorporated every comment I received into this, and um we shared this last night at the, at the potluck, we talked about it last week, I have copies of it here. And what I love about it is it's up, it provides some clarity, and I thought like the staff letter. Hold us on it, which is perfect, you know, it's like, we, we, we take the time to take, these are the things. Called us on it, which is perfect, you know, it's like we, we, we take the time to think, these are the things that are important to us, so we're gonna be transparent about what we care about. And it's really easy when people give you feedback and say, you know, this is one of your priorities, so as a result, you know. This is, this is why it's important, and I, I read the staff letter and I read back. You know, our statement, our lead is, there it is, there it is, there it is, yeah, it makes it very clear as to why this recommend, this suggestion makes aligned with what we've talked about, so. We have that, and then what we haven't finalized yet is, and we talked about it last week, a service promise for the council. That would set direction and build a, help us build a stronger culture of citizen engagement. Um, we had a draft, it was into the, that um. We've worked on it, Matt worked on, we've worked on it together individually, one on one, as we've been able to, and I got some comments into this, um I shared it. With a blind copy format to all the counselors last week, last Tuesday, last Tuesday following our Monday discussion, so I, I didn't get any additional feedback. So my hope is, talk about it briefly tonight, I can, I've handed it out to people that are here, and then my hope is that we could. Adopt it as our service promise, we started talking about it over the summer too, you know, and so things that get, you know, while we, the recycling stuff. Jumps up on the agenda and we gotta take care of that, so this kinda thing, um the library, you know, jumps, and you gotta take care of it, so this is something we've. Worked on as a council and it's our service promise to the people of, that we represent and the people that we work with. Um, and like the communication piece, it's a signals what's, what's important and so we have that.
I like it, Dan, I think you did a great job on it and Matt, I guess you worked together and I. Really appreciate the many conversations we've had about it, I mean, this is like the fourth conversation, so for me, it feels really solid and we vetted it back and forth on council a lot and I feel good about it.
Yeah, so um if, if we're in agreement that these statements really reflect our sense of how we, you know. How we wanna continue to go forward, I will ask Sophie to make those changes to um. The relevant sections of the website.
Can we pass this by, can we consider this as a, as an order on next week's agenda? If we can, if we set an agenda, I mean.
We can make it an order on the agenda if you like, I mean, we can just nod along and put it on there, or we can make it a formal order, which we prefer.
I prefer a formal order.
Well, we'll just do that, okay, so I will go forward and, and ask staff to, um ask Sophie to ask staff to. Start that section of the website for the search, we'll put the statement on leadership transition in there and we'll hold this uh service promise statement. Um, for approval for next week. All right, yeah, thank you, before we move on, I wanna recognize that we have public comment on our agenda, so if there is any other public comment.
So, last week, when the senior man for team, Matt, to write the letter that you've all read, thank you very much. I volunteered to speak tonight if you continue to go down the DIY, DIY. Thank you for not going down the Y, I have. Um, I'd also like to reiterate that we are open to conversations through this process and I would be welcome any kind of communication.
That was my favorite part of the letter, that line was my favorite, that line was my favorite part of the letter.
It was a great letter, thank you.
Mitch, do we have anybody online? Excuse me, do we have anyone online?
Nobody online. We don't have anybody online at this time that has their hands raised.
I, I take a motion to move into executive session pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A. To discuss candidates for the interim town manager.
Move, to move, don't second it, I guess.
Dan, okay, we are moving into executive session at five fifty seven, we're going to come back into this room, so we're gonna do our executive session in the conference room.